All right, we have one item on tonight's agenda, which is a discussion regarding potential uses for our first tranche, if you will, of ARPA funding. Mr. City Manager, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Francisco will be joining us here shortly. At the retreat, council had a great discussion about possible uses of ARPA funding. We anticipate a total in receipts before the end of the current fiscal year at about 22.4 million. Based on the conversation at the retreat, staff kind of plugged in numbers, not scientifically, and, you know, we didn't go back and record the retreat to figure out how council thought those dollars might be allocated. A couple of the things did receive some specific attention, including the Emergency Operations Center and the Teen CEO Program. Most recent conversations related to the COVID vaccine incentives happened, so we were able to plug in that number. That includes 475,000 in gift cards meant to incentivize people to go in and start the vaccination process, and $25,000 for a raffle prize for anybody vaccinated by the deadline. The balance of those numbers plugged in there are just a place to start a conversation, but we wanted to see, you know, how far we could go with ARPA dollars based on the list of council's goals and objectives for that one-time revenue source. Obviously, anything that we don't wind up spending in a category that council identifies would be available to repurpose anytime between now and 2024. And, you know, it'll never leave this special bucket of money. We'll always keep it identified as ARPA dollars for council's action. So the only formal action taken was the appropriation of ARPA dollars for the Emergency Operations Center. We can kind of take them in order since the next line item, COVID vaccine incentives, was a recent conversation with the council that included 475,000 in certificates and 25,000 in raffle, and so 500,000 at that line item. Madam Mayor.
Okay, Councilor Hall.
I'm just, I'm fine with going in order, except that I do want to address the nonprofit support.
Yes.
Because the three that I'm aware of is 500,000 for food and shelter, 500,000 for the Virtue Center, and 100,000 for the Arts Council. So we need a little bit more probably in the nonprofit support.
And in that, having that same thought from staff's perspective, Mr. Francisco, I'll let you drive the Excel here as we, as we adjust on the fly. As it related to nonprofit support and food and shelter in our arena of affordable housing and that type of programming, entirely possible to satisfy the nonprofits and then food and shelter requests through the affordable housing line item. Just a thought, but this is all fluid and council picks the numbers and we'll plug them in. That will allow us, when we, you know, achieve consensus tonight, some of these line items will provide opportunities for us to actually start some real staff work. Some of them will take a little longer, like a potential remodel at 718 North Porter. We anticipate a report from our consultants at home base to show up end of September, first of October. It will provide us some insights as to how 718 can be utilized to positively impact outcomes in our homeless population. So that'll sit for a little while, but some of our other line items, we may be able to advance. Obviously, the vaccination incentive, we want to go full speed ahead, so you'll see an appropriation on your next council agenda for that one.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we had all three of those on our list. Food and shelter, Virtue Center, Arts Council.
We are aware of those three.
I think at retreat, you guys talked about the specific ones, but then the discussion kind of morphed into maybe we should, we don't know what other needs are out there for the community, and maybe it should be more like a grant system, like the CS, VS, Social Policy Services Grant. So I think that's how it got launched like that.
Yeah, I know we had that conversation too. So I guess all I'd say about that is with the Virtue Center, that meets a need that is definitely outlined for behavioral health services. So it definitely targets ARPA funding, food and shelter, same. So, yeah.
I would agree with Councilor Hall on those comments. I see the value in doing a kind of SVSC grant program generally, but those are identified for very specific causes that line up with the goals of ARPA.
So, yeah, if you were to send out a notice of funding availability to, say, nonprofits, if you meet this criteria, you know, submit a statement of your needs, you could take such applications through a process like that and, you know, grab the top scorers if that's the direction council would like to go.
And I'd also say, same for the Arts Council, there's a specific category for addressing tourism, hospitality, economic development, of those, of recovering entities like that.
So potentially, you could put dollar values in a bucket for addressing the needs of our homeless population. You could put dollars in a bucket for the tourism and economic recovery and stimulation, and accept grants in two categories, or applications in two categories if council wanted to approach it that way. There really aren't rules for that type of engagement, so it's wherever council's comfort level lands.
Councilor Dudley?
I just had some questions about looking at our top five that we voted on. We have tourism, specifically talking about it, Lake Thunderbird was number one. And then we had transit option, ride share slash bus stops, and I don't see that on the list. We also talked about pattern zoning, streetery slash food deserts that are going on in our city, as well as small development, small developer incentives. So the only thing of those listed that we all collectively voted on as our priorities, only one is up there. So can you explain why?
Absolutely.
There are two different things. I mean, that's, that's our prior, like, policy priorities, whereas that's not.
And that list encompasses, you know, the-
Transit option and ride share and bus stop is not.
Yeah, does not need to be necessarily ARPA funding, and we do have a transit fund. And we didn't, we didn't, we didn't connect the thought of ARPA and that transit alternative. We love the transit alternative. Our transit folks are doing homework on that subject right now. So we weren't thinking that that would be a big demand on ARPA funding. Could be an infrastructure funding need, could just be a component out of all of the funding we have available for public transportation. This just could be a component in that fund. So the things on this particular list were things council talked about specifically related to ARPA, but everything on your list that you identified, those are things staff's working on. We'll be bringing you back pieces either to committees for specific direction, or we'll be bringing it back to you for council action.
The, the one big thing that I'm really concerned about though is the food desert and the few food insecurities that many families in our cities are facing. And again, I think that ARPA money needs to go into the hands of the people in our community that are suffering as a result from COVID, and I don't see that in here.
500,000 for food and shelters for the Food and Resource Center.
Yeah, I don't see that in here, other than maybe a possibly like a vaccine incentive type thing, but.
Yeah, between the vaccine incentive and then on the food desert thing in that either nonprofit or on the affordable housing piece, absolutely can include those activities. I think they, they qualify very well.
But if someone is, like, currently facing food insecurity, the only way that they'd be able to get some help with that is if they wait until this money's distributed to the nonprofit as food and shelter, and they have to make their pantry, and then they can go get food. So we're looking at months. Like, where's the immediate relief for those in our community that are affected by COVID in this?
Hmm, don't have that. We, it, right now, a mechanism, we have not identified or established a mechanism to put cash in hands of people who say, I have the need. That, we don't, we don't have that currently available. Typically, that type of activity goes through a process where you identify income qualifications and you verify employment status, and you go through a pretty substantial level of activity to verify what the request is, that they meet whatever the established criteria is. So.
Do we still have funds that were set aside from last COVID relief money that has not been spent for rent relief and things like that?
Rental assistance, there's a substantial amount of dollars available for rental assistance. I don't know if we've ever had money set aside in terms of just, you know.
Yeah, we, we had a rental assistance program through CDBG. I don't know how much is left in that, as well as, as well as utility assistance.
Okay.
And, and there's also in federal money for the stimulus payments that have been made as well.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Hall, do you have a follow-up on that?
Yeah, just a follow-up on the transit piece. I thought transit was going to be a significant part of the infrastructure package.
We believe so.
Okay.
Yeah, and the, the model out of Arlington, it, it, it caught the interest of everybody on staff looking at and working in public transit. So we'll be bringing you back updates and information, and probably a study session environment on that subject. Could go to CPTC, just trying to think of the best place to bring it back to council.
And I just honestly don't see that in the interim final rule of-
Correct.
Of public transit.
Yep.
So I'm hoping that is going to be the infrastructure bucket.
All meetings I'm sitting in on, it seems like it will be.
Okay.
Councilman Foreman?
Mine is just a quick question, since I had to miss the retreat. All these things, before we start ticking away, they're all approved ways that we could spend money. We're not going to vote on it and then find out, like, we can't appropriate funds in that way.
Yep. Yeah, we spent some time in the rules with the city attorney's office and through Mr. Francisco's connection in the world of all the finance directors across the country, and we are confident that these are all eligible program expenses.
The Teen CEO Program would be the only one that would have to be targeted, but I would think, you, each of these could be fit into some blocks, yes.
Okay. Councilor Peacock?
Along the same lines of the infrastructure bill, I know we had talked about it at the retreat, when that money becomes available, basically pivoting the EOC money to use infrastructure funds and then freeing them up in this bucket, is that still?
Absolutely an option for council's action. Yeah, when those dollars in the rules present themselves, we'll be able to bring you back that discussion item, and, and council will get to choose the most appropriate bucket from your perspective as to how we complete that project.
Councilor Holman?
Yeah, that would be very nice if that happens. I agree that we do need to really think about the immediate relief component for food type of situations. And I would definitely like to consider some sort of potential incentive that we could get, to maybe get a, some sort of grocery to fill that space that's empty now on 12th and Lindsay, which has created a bit of a food desert there. There's, you gotta go a mile north or about a mile south, and the transit system, you can get there fast going there, but it takes a long time to get back home. And so, and the Dollar General next to there doesn't have fresh produce and things like that that I know of. So that has been an issue, and if we were able to provide maybe some kind of incentive to some, I'm not sure what company, if any, would be interested in filling that empty space. But it's been a grocery store my entire life, as long as I can remember, so. And it's, it's right in the center of where I would say most of the lower-income housing on the east side is. A lot of folks that don't have cars and things like that. So if there was a way that we could help incentivize getting that space filled with a food option, that would be something we should think about, I think. The affordable housing piece, do we talk about exactly what we have in mind when it comes to that?
So we were talking about Reeves Avenue and some houses that we've, we've had, you know, conversations with property owners who said, you know, if food shelter keeps expanding, it negatively impacts my ability to do anything with my house. And there are several rental homes on Reeves that we thought it may be a great opportunity to acquire those for operation through the housing authority, to make sure we do not lose ground on our Section 8 availability. When we are lining up people currently experiencing homelessness into a housing plan, Section 8 is usually the longer-term solution, and we have fewer Section 8 units today than we did six months ago. So our ability to invest to ensure we are gaining ground in Section 8 availability would be staff's primary recommendation for how to use those dollars.
So the houses that, potentially, homes that are on the west side of the street.
Yes.
Reed Avenue.
Yep, you could make, you know, some property owners who have struggled happy and increase the number of Section 8 units available to us.
And we had talked somewhat about the Emerald Greens apartments.
Correct. We're trying to verify their current status in Section 8. We were notified that they had lost their certification. There was, you know, they had to have somebody on fire watch because they had some storm damage, and we know the fire watch has been canceled. So we do not know if they have received their Section 8 status, if that's come back to them, and if those units are still back on the market. But that was definitely one of the properties that was Section 8 at one time and may not be.
And it's isolated, and it's, it has, it does have a lot of problems, at least according to the residents. When the police department and I were there for Neighborhood Cookout about a month ago, several of the residents weren't very shy about expressing their displeasure with how the place is run and operated, I guess. One of the buildings burnt down, another one is, is potentially going to burn down. There's abandoned units with, full of furniture and trash, and there's kids, and concerns about bugs, and all sorts of stuff like that. So that seemed like a good opportunity if there was a willing seller.
You know, and of course, what we don't really have is ballpark values to be talking, you know, for that number of units. The ability to get the most number of units available, you know, in, in one, one big effort would be great. So we, we stuck a number in there, that number, it, it may be a lot less. It may be a little bit more. We don't, it's, right now, it's just a placeholder, and we'd be happy to take on that effort and that challenge with whatever resources council has available in this process.
Okay, that, that's would be, before we start thinking about maybe building new stuff, if we can rehab something like that, those houses, I think that's a pretty good path forward.
Okay, Councilor Hall?
So, under the affordable housing, I've really been having multiple conversations about this, including the, exploring the option of finding more permanent and/or transitional housing, and it could involve acquiring some property on, on Reed. I also support what Councilmember Holman is saying, and being able to have an opportunity to really address affordable housing in a significant way is probably one of the things I'm the most enthusiastic about on this list, because we haven't been able to do it. And we're, we're certainly plugging away year after year after year with a housing authority that makes maximum use of the resources they have. But to be able to actually come up with a plan for permanent housing, transitional housing, rehabbing places that we expect people to live in that are substandard, and we all know it, I, I, you know, the, the beauty of this is we have the flexibility to think it through. We don't have to get it programmed right away, but we can address Emerald Greens, we can address neighborhood impact. One of the other things that we just had a conversation this morning in the Ad Hoc Homelessness Committee about this, we have vouchers, we have a path for people to be housed, but we are really challenged right now with places to locate. So this also could involve some kind of program that we've discussed just briefly about, you know, incentivizing motels, hotels, apartment complexes, all kinds of places that have a vacancy rate that we could possibly use as a temporary, very temporary housing, and that's one of the things we really need right now. The other thing I'm throwing out there that, again, we've got the luxury of time to think this through, but I have been in conversation with a construction science professor at OU, and he has two classes, one each semester, that is always looking for projects that benefit the community, and he has been looking into another form of temporary housing that we don't really have in Norman, that would be, you know, modular structures that might be something that also would take care of our immediate problem of trying to find a temporary housing plan to transition people into permanent housing. And he came up with an estimate for about $500,000, and his students would, you know, work through the problem, design the units, and they would probably help with some funding on the OU side, too. So I think that's something we could throw in the mix under affordable housing.
How many units?
Twelve. So, that's another thing we can add. But I really am looking for traditional ways, creative ways, and this affects not only those who happen to be unsheltered right now, but people who need an affordable place to live, and they are currently living in substandard housing. So I think we can do a lot of good right there.
It's rare to find a resource that, that spells out specifically the utilization for this purpose, that, that has as few strings as this does for, for affordable housing. Community Development Block Grant, I mean, it's, it's pretty labor-intensive, got a lot of hoops to jump through, and just to have-
Yeah.
A resource potentially this large that you could assign and allocate to affordable, affordability, it's, this is a rare opportunity.
And we really have, you know, we're fortunate because we have a steady stream right now, but we all know it's just not enough. So this is an opportunity to get creative and to truly, really address particularly the temporary and transitional housing that I think we're challenged with as a community. So hope we can figure that out.
In addition to taking our time and making sure these decisions are best for Norman long-term, Madam Clerk reminded us that we do have studies about-
Yeah.
-to come on down and, and help us guide-
Yeah.
-appropriate spending. So excited to see those.
Yeah, the Affordable Housing Study, Lisa Craig is here with us, is leaving, hasn't actually been let yet, but the homeless one will be coming back soon, and then the Affordable Housing Study will go out on the street. So that's something you might, I'm not sure what the timeframe is for how long that will take. Lisa might be able to answer that question, but that input should be very valuable to you.
Councilman Foreman?
That's exactly what I was going to say, where we were with the homeless study and stuff, because I would, you know, tread with trepidation on assigning dollar values to certain things. I mean, we could surely talk about things we want to do, but I would want to see that study. It was a very expensive study, and so I'd like to see what it has to say before we start assigning those dollar figures to anything specific.
Absolutely. Anything on this list that you, you would be comfortable with advancing, that's great. And, and it does not have to be programmed until 2024. But if you see low-hanging fruit that you want staff to begin to work on, we're happy to jump right on any of these pieces. And we knew that the COVID incentive was one of those immediate needs. So anything else on the list that, that you think is worth acting on sooner than later, happy to do so, and we'll bring you back the rest as studies become available, et cetera.
And Mr. City Manager, can you remind us how much we have to spend now with the advice of waiting to spend the second half at a later date?
11.2 in the bank.
Okay, and when is the second coming?
May of 2022, so current fiscal year.
But we've already allocated 9.5 of the 11.2.
Correct. It wouldn't be spent until well after we receive the second tranche in May, just based on the timing of city bond money from PSSD that we'll spend first, and then these dollars will be spent last.
Councilor Peacock?
Somebody mentioned pattern zoning a second ago, and I would really like to see us use some ARPA money to kind of go down that path, and I think it fits under the affordable housing category pretty well. The goal being that it would diversify our housing stock and give us more than a single type of housing. We're seeing the student housing- We're seeing the student housing in the core area. Hopefully, a focus on the missing middle, kind of the triplexes, duplexes, things that would fall under the affordable housing category, so.
Is that?
Councilwoman Studley?
Is that something that would be covered in the Affordable Housing Study, would be pattern zoning?
It could be. You know, the Affordable Housing Study will be looking at the housing market as a whole and where the gaps are that we have, and so at that point, probably what we're anticipating, it will start looking at opportunities for increasing density instead of just, just adding more on the fringes, and that's where the pattern zoning could come in.
Is that something that's being paid for by a grant that you acquired, or?
No, there was a capital fund, that project last year, and we did the homeless strategic plan first
Awesome.
and moving into the affordable housing plan.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall, is your hand up?
Yeah, this is just a follow-up as well on the pattern zoning, because those conversations are already underway, you know, with the Planning Department, so, again, that would just be another consideration under that big bucket. It might be there, we might be able to fund it from somebody else, but I think it's pretty clear that we at least want to get a consultant here to flesh that out and see how it can be applied to Norman.
In terms of fleshing out, I am 100% support for a million dollars towards entrepreneur grants, but I think we should be working on that right now before we obviously spend it. What that looks like, is it incubator space, is it actually startup grants? So, would that go to EDAB, would that go to BACA, where would that begin?
Happy to agendize that in the, in the most appropriate forum. If you'd like, you know, participation from the business community, EDAB is a great place for us to agendize that conversation, seek that input, and come up with some strategies to bring to Council for execution. If it's going to be a competitive grant-type application, that would be great. And, yeah, a conversation about an investment in incubator space also came up under that heading to say, "How do you make this investment last into perpetuity?" And that need for incubator space, even if it's, you know, at a former post office building-type thing. That's how that conversation kind of evolved. So, we'd be happy to agendize that with EDAB and said, "If we had a million dollars, how, how could we best invest that to stimulate the entrepreneurial spirit here in Norman?"
Perfect. Yeah, let's definitely get started on that. I don't know the workload of EDAB, but this is right down their alley, and then once we get it out of there, I think BACA would be a great place for it. Can you tell us a little bit more about the 718 North Porter remediation?
Yes, so, right now, the building that we would anticipate taking ownership of, just here in the next handful of weeks, the hospital is currently in the process of rehousing their functions that occupied 718. It's a big space, it doesn't have a whole lot of walls on the inside, but recognizing whatever the Home Base Report delivers to us in October, it'll give us some insight as to how that 718 North Porter address could be utilized to really improve outcomes for our homeless population. And we thought about dollars available for a remodel, whatever that looks like. So, it really is a question mark as to, you know, does it need more restroom space? Does it need more elevator capacity to get to the second floor? How many new walls or how many fewer walls do we need when we get into it? And, you know, the thought of it costing, you know, a hundred to $200 a square foot in a remodel, very realistic. And with the target population, those struggling with homelessness, it definitely qualifies for ARPA funding. So, we can't go real fast. We think we do need to wait for that Home Base Report to give us kind of a path, and then we can bring it to a committee to talk about, okay, based on these needs, do we go out and bring on an architect to say, "Help us design the space to meet this need," and we have dollars to do that.
Yeah, I'd be curious to see that, because previous conversations had been partnering with the county to have some sort of sobering center on one of the floors.
They are very interested, and that could be a component that may add value in the discussion in that maybe you don't have to pay for security if the Sheriff's Department occupies a portion of the building for the sobering center, and, you know, there's a deputy on, on, on site all the time. That could be a great element to reduce ongoing operating costs and still provide you with all the space you're looking for, for other services.
That definitely seems like another almost two million that we're not going to be able to spend
Correct.
in the near future, okay. Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, I just wanted to add on to that, again, just from information coming out of the Ad Hoc Homelessness Committee. I strongly support keeping that category for 718 North Porter. We, we don't have the final report yet from Home Base. I think that's really important to wait on that information. So, again, we have the luxury of time. But what I'm expecting, based on what we know already, is that there is a need in our community for a night shelter and a day resource center. So, I think that's going to be part of the conversation once we get the results of that.
Now, we have heard that in the, in the opportunity at Food and Shelter and their plans for expansion, that was one of the sets of services they indicated could take place at, at a new facility built at Food and Shelter.
Speaking of Food and Shelter, they've asked for the $500,000. If we decided, you know, put it on the agenda for Tuesday and went ahead and appropriated it, and are they waiting on just that to move forward with the Food and Resource Center?
I think they've got some planning applications and an amendment to a PUD that need to take place before they're able to advance.
Perfect, so that's not an immediate, immediate either, okay.
What about the timing on the Virtue Center? Do we know that?
They're having a groundbreaking on September 1st that I've been invited to, so I'm sure they would like it. I got an update recently that they're still working on their match campaign, but we can look into that and see if I can get you an answer.
Mrs. Hudson, have we had a submittal from the Virtue Center yet in terms, I mean, drawings or site plan applications or anything? It's next to the United Way Building right on I-35.
I'm not sure.
Okay. Just, if she saw a big submittal, then they're ready to go.
It's going to the Planning Commission on September 12th or something?
It's going to the Planning Commission on September 12th.
Virtue?
Yeah.
Okay. And Food and Shelter, too?
Uh, Food and Shelter, too, or just?
I'm talking about Food and Shelter.
Oh, okay.
Got it.
Well, I can clarify that one.
I'm not sure Virtue has to do anything.
I'll check in with her.
And then Arts Council, what's there?
And do you, Ms. Gavin, do you have any idea of when you would need funds?
Yesterday. It's for the current fiscal year.
$100,000 for the arts community. Can you give us a brief rundown of why $100,000 and what it would be used for?
Yeah, so, every, every year, we use hotel funds to grant out to approximately 25 arts organizations. The current year, the number that we got for hotel funds is about $100,000 less than what we were able to grant out last year at Y-21 after we got COVID relief support. So, it puts our arts organizations, 25 of them, at about 60% of funding of what they had the previous fiscal year. And so, we're already, they're already in their budgeting processes, you know, they're trying to figure out how to do their programs, and as we know, these are programs that do directly impact the economy in Norman. They're, they're drivers of visitors and tourism and more hotel stays, and to be able to not give them full funding in the current fiscal year, it just, it hampers our overall economic recovery in the community. So, $100,000 would bring us back to where we were in fiscal year 21. And then we're hoping by the next fiscal year, our hotels will have hopefully rebounded more fully and will be more prepared to do our normal branding process in that time.
So, Food and Shelter is $500,000, Virtue Center is $500,000, and then she wants $100,000.
Correct.
And we have $1,000 up there.
Million.
Million.
I mean, a million, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it can be a million one at the, at the nod of the Council. We'll change that right now, and we can bring that back for appropriation as quickly as Council would like to act upon it.
Is it a follow-up or a new question, because Councilwoman Lynn's next?
I think it'd be a mess if I don't speak up, at least for my constituents. We've been here for roughly 30 minutes, and almost the whole majority of everything was spoken about. What this money has to do with the homeless. You're looking at $7.3 million out of this, roughly a third of this money going to homeless or homeless issues. I don't know if that's the wisest thing I am all about, being able to help, but spending a third of this money seems very irresponsible. We have other issues, you know, we're not, we're still in negotiations with police and fire and whatnot, and we're going to spend $7.3 million and then take it to them and say, "Hey, we can't, we can't meet your needs." There's a lot of stuff that could be done with this money, but to use one-third of it. I mean, I don't know what our official count is on homeless people, if it's around 200, that, you, why not just write them a check for $36,500 apiece and say, "Good luck to you," instead of continuing these services that are just going to build for years and years and years and just drain and drain? What are you going to do after this? $7.3 million on this one issue. How do, how do you think that makes the rest of the citizens feel when they get this money? That was their tax money that they put into this, and you're going to use a third of it dedicated to just the homeless issue? That is going to drive people crazy. That is going to drive our community crazy. They, they already have issues with the homeless, and I know, I've talked to people with their, with big hearts. This is more geared towards nonprofits and churches and not tax or federal dollars coming in for the homeless. $7.3 million, a third of this money dedicated to this, our whole conversation so far about homeless. And I just, I just, I think that's a bit crazy.
Councilmember Hall?
So, follow-up, Councilmember Lynn, are you including the 4.5 as part of your total under affordable housing? Because to me, that's addressing a much larger need than just our homeless population.
That, that is definitely included in it.
Okay.
It might not be 100% of that, but that was definitely the conversation that we had about it.
Well, I just want to make sure that I'm being clear, under that category, that we have a demonstrated need in our community for affordable housing, for people who are currently in housing, and they're struggling to be able to stay there and to keep a roof over their heads. So, that category, to me, is much more broad to a need that we understand that we're not able to meet. And, and the number is, according to a very technical definition that Ms. Prine could probably talk about, but we need 9,000 units of affordable housing in Norman. And that's for people who currently need, are in some type of housing that is more of their income than they're, they should be spending on, on housing.
And, and just, and it's a definition that when you go through the budget process a couple of times, Lisa, the, the, when we say low and moderate income, what is, what is the income level for a single individual or a family of four that qualify for low and moderate income assistance? So, these are working poor in many instances.
What you're talking about is 80% of median income, and it, off the top of my head, I'm thinking that a family of four at 80%, I want to say it's $50,000 a year. The interesting thing that Councilmember Hall was talking about was that we have a shortage of about 9,000 affordable housing units, meaning that rental units, meaning that there's 9,000 households in Norman that are paying more than 30% of their household income for housing. So, what that means is, is that that extra fund, those extra funds that they're paying for housing, they are not paying for retail activity, and so they are not generating sales tax with those funds. And so, if you begin to look at the provision of affordable housing as an economic development driver, it's a whole different conversation, so.
Thank you. Councilwoman Studley?
He wants to finish his thought.
Councilwoman Lynn?
Well, if we're going to talk about economic developer drivers, there's definitely ways that we could help more, such as the Dale Graham Foundation. They help veterans get their benefits, and their studies would show that 80% or 80 cents of every dollar that they help get those benefits returned to your community. So, those are people actually putting money back into the community. We're looking at people that on, on all this, not, not all this, I understand those percentages of that and rent and whatnot, but a lot, large portion of this are people that are putting no money in the community. Where is the return for people that have actually thrown money in the pot on this? Why are we not considering things that benefit the, the people that are actually paying the taxes and whatnot like that? We focus way too much of, of resources. Not that, not that we don't need some help, not that people don't need, need help, but if we're going to give this large chunk of resources, it just blows my mind. What, the people that are paying into the system want, want to say, "Hey, what am I getting for my money?" The guy over here that's not working, that sometimes they choose to live like that, sometimes they have rough times. We're always willing to give a hand up, but when it just becomes a constant handout, it's just a drain. And there's, there is no return on that investment then. That's not affordable housing, that's not anything. There's just, it is give, 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 and I, I just believe that that is more the, the place of churches and nonprofits and, and donations, not with tax money.
Thank you. Councilwoman Studley?
So, this is COVID relief money. It's for people and communities that have been affected by this pandemic that is ongoing. And that affects more than just the 300 homeless people that are in our city. That affects a great number of people, specifically in Ward 1, where it is a lower-income ward, but we have the densest population, and we have a lot of people that are facing housing insecurity. And if they get kicked out once this rent memorandum lifts, there's no affordable housing here, Kelly, and that's what the problem is. Like, they don't have another place that they can go get a new apartment, because there is no other place to go. And this isn't for just homeless people, and I hope that, like, the people that you're talking about that have put all of this tax money in, which, including myself, I pay my taxes, I'm willing to say, "Hey, this is a tough time in America's economy right now, and we all have to be able to help each other and support each other and lift each other up." We're talking about specifically ARPA funding, which is designed for that. It's not to give a handout to somebody that already has money, because they don't need a handup right now. There's other people in our community that need that handup to get out of that situation.
So, building on that real quick, I emailed this to you guys, because I didn't get it until right before the meeting. I had a meeting today with a company called Social Wise. I don't know if you've heard about it, Daryl.
Have not.
It's, have you heard about A Better Way in Tulsa? It's like that, but they describe it as they're the analog version of, of this. So, it's kind of a little bit more techie, it's a startup. And so, you put money into it, and nonprofits submit their projects, and then you pay them to go, you know, better the community, whatever that looks like. So, they would have like a refillable debit card, so they're actually earning money, and then building a digital resume that they're trying to work with Express to transition that into meaningful employment. And so, you'll see in the proposal, they've asked a portion from City of Norman, Cleveland County, the state, and Sarkis Foundation. So, I would encourage you to look at that, and we can dive into it and ask the owners more questions if you'd like. But it seemed like another great way to help people recover and get some money in their wallets and then lead towards permanent employment, so. That's Is it A Better Way? Uh, no, it's called
Social Wise.
W, yeah, it's in your inbox.
Yeah, we just got it.
And did the attachment come through with it?
Yes.
Okay, good. So, I was like, "I'm going to need you to put together one page real quick." So, go ahead and take a look at that, and that would be something worth consideration. I think they've asked for $250,000 from us. It's a decent amount, but their goal is to get started with an overall million, and they're very much, I mean, this is an ongoing program, so they're, they understand this is one-term funding, but they fully believe in the project and how it actually puts money back into the economy and, and helps people. And so, it may be something we want to continue after this, but worth discussing. Councilwoman Schuler?
Just because it's about this, and then I'll, I have another thing, but I'll let Councilmember Hall go first. Is there a reason why they're asking the county for less money than they're asking us?
A great question. That was my first thought when I saw that. My only thought could be, this will be for Norman.
Okay.
Not necessarily for all of Cleveland, it could apply, so I asked
It's targeted to Norman, specifically not?
It could be more than that, but one of the challenges is transportation. Once you get It could be more than that, but one of the challenges is transportation. Once you get the project signed up, how do you get people there? And so, fortunately, we have a no fair public transportation system, so that's helpful. You cap the hours that they can work. So, it'd be interesting to see us again putting money in people's pockets that they'll then put in the economy during, towards projects that beautify, clean, fix our community. So, it seems like a nice circle of benefit there. Councilwoman Hallman.
I'm ready. Okay. Um, I, I definitely understand everyone's concern about trying to address, we all have different constituencies that we have to represent. Uh, I think, to me, the affordable housing piece really prevents the homeless issue that we are all concerned about. Uh, people that are working, that do pay their bills, that pay taxes, or go to school, they do the right thing, but the housing market is, uh, becoming more than they can manage, that they can afford, and the options are becoming more limited. We're seeing redevelopment of what was once affordable housing in Norman is becoming newer, newer housing that is, you know, two, three times more expensive than what was there before in some cases. Um, so I think if we want to, if we don't wanna see the increased visual presence of people that, uh, are without a home right now on the streets of downtown or anywhere else in the city, then affordable housing is something we really have to invest in uh, to prevent that from happening. Um, and, you know, from what I've seen, everyone in the whole city is concerned about uh, the visual, what they feel is a visual increase in unhoused and homeless folks in our city. So, I think affordable housing isn't necessarily a homeless support thing. I think it's a homeless prevention, uh, tool. Um, and I think we are, you know, proposing to spend almost ten million dollars on a police, fire, and emergency response facility with this money. And I think we need to. We have a voter-approved facility that we need to get done. We need to get it done so that our emergency response personnel can do their jobs, uh, uh, better than, even better with better facilities and better equipment. Um, so, you know, that's been a tough one for a lot of folks in our community, and some of our words to, to swallow that, that you're gonna spend nine point five on the EOC, why do we need to do that? They don't understand what that facility is maybe, or what, how it benefits them, or maybe they do, and they just don't think it's something we should do. Uh, but I think we've come to the conclusion that we've gotta get it done, and I've, you know, I support that expenditure even though it's almost half of the money. Um, so I think, you know, we're trying to do our best here to address some of the most concerning issues that we've identified, and, um, so I, I definitely understand where you're coming from. Uh, but I do think the affordable part, the four point five, is really something that prevents the homeless issue in the, in the end, really.
Thank you. And City Manager Powell, I, I'd be curious, have we had conversations in terms of what we've allocated toward affordable housing for buying out the owners on Reed Avenue?
We have not. We wanted to have this conversation first to make sure that, um, that, you know, whatever dollar amount you felt comfortable having us proceed, uh, we, we wanted to make sure we didn't, uh, overstep our budget capabilities. So, we're happy to initiate those conversations this week. With council's consensus, we bring you back an appropriation, uh, uh, agenda item to actually put dollars in the bank available to enter into escrow and.
Are there thoughts about, just even exploring that to see what that looks like?
How, how many units are you talking?
Two.
Um, there, there, there are two owner occupied, and there's probably six more rental on Reed.
There's ten structures, five are owner occupied, five are rental.
Ten in total.
And they were all built about nineteen forty-five. So, just from my experience of being in several of those houses, you're looking at not only the acquisition cost, the substantial rehab cost. That, to the point that it really may not be economically feasible.
And anytime you use federal money to relocate folks, we've gotta follow the Uniform Relocation Act, so that's something we're gonna have to keep an eye on too. Uh, that's, we, we did this in our Robinson Underpass project where we had to buy some property, and people had to move, and you have to pay expenses for moving, and it just gets more expensive. So, that's something we've gotta look at too, that may impact the number that we could, uh, approach.
Definitely more information on that, it sounds like. Okay, Councilwoman Schuler.
Yeah, just to kind of continue this conversation about affordable housing and kind of who that serves and benefits. Um, you know, I echo, you know, what, um, Councilmember Holman, Councilmember Studley, um, and, you know, Councilmember, uh, Hall have been saying about this, but I also wanna underscore the fact that um, low-income individuals are taxpayers, right? So, we're not just talking about homeless individuals, um, in this, which is a, a small percentage of, you know, what we're, what we're talking about. Um, but just because, uh, you know, they aren't, uh, you know, spending as much money or making as much money, they are taxpaying citizens, and so that, their money, they are paying into this money just as, as much as, uh, you know, we are and deserve the benefit, um, of us thinking about using these funds, uh, for their benefit. And so, I just kind of wanna put that on the record that just because, um, you know, they may not make as much money as everybody else, they are also taxpaying citizens, and this is their money as well.
Councilwoman Hallman.
I was just gonna follow up and echo something that Lisa said, I think Lisa said about, if there's more affordable housing and rent is less, then people have more money to spend, and we're reliant on sales tax, unlike all the other cities and other states that rely on property tax and sales tax. We need people to have expendable funds to go buy stuff and go eat at restaurants. And if they're spending more than thirty percent of their income on rent, that's a lot of money that they're not able to go spend at stores on Main Street and everywhere else in town. So, I, that's, it really is an economic thing from that standpoint, in my opinion, too, so.
Okay. Councilwoman Torrello?
Well, actually, uh, Holman here stole it from me. So, I was, it's a, no, I do understand that, I mean, we're spending nine point five million dollars on the EOC, but when the infrastructure money comes in, that money's reallocated here. I'd like to see that spent on other capital projects other than what we're talking about now. Because my question to you, for example, on the affordable housing, how many houses are we looking at here? So, how many people are affected by this? Or, on your side here, and I totally get where you're coming from, uh, Councilwoman, uh, on, on the rent. So, are we gonna subsidize rents for the next couple of months? So, how will this money under the affordable housing be spent? How many people will it serve? So, if it's serving two hundred people, is that the most wise spend of the money? So, so that's my question right now. So, how many people will it serve? Do you have any idea right now? On the affordable funds, four point five million dollars?
Well, it would.
Approximate, is ballpark.
Yeah. Well, it would depend on how the funds are invested. If, if the city were to pursue a public-private partnership such as with the tax credit project, um, obviously, the money would go a lot further in the, in the development of units. Um, if the city were to just go with building apartment condos, for four point five million dollars land costs and everything, you're talking about maybe a hundred units.
Okay. I see, I see Mrs. Hall shaking her head. I agree with you that if we consider taking this money into PPP, I think the money will go farther. It will serve more people in the long run. Okay, I, I just think that if we gear, gear, and look towards that way here, that's a more efficient way of spending the money here. And, and like, I, I agree with all of you guys here that, um, more sales tax will be put into the economy here in Norman. It'll work out in the end here. I just wanna see that when the infrastructure money does come in, that, that nine point five is reallocated for, to actually put back into the economy to build things, um, that employ people. You know, that's very important. So, we get them out of the hole, just make sure they got jobs to go to, so they don't go back into the hole. Like, I hope that's the idea. I mean, that's my idea of, of how to fix the problems, that we don't wanna keep them in a, in a lifestyle chain of, of retiring in this whole homelessness and, and low income. Let's, just, just fix this problem today, and then look at the next problem with the next part of money here to make sure and to ensure that they can go and, and get higher-paying jobs, you know, so, so it doesn't continue for the next four or five years.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hall?
Just a follow-up, make sure we're on the same page. Um, so, under the affordable housing bucket, what, what I'm talking about is actual physical structures of housing to provide for people. We did talk about, we have a very, a pretty robust rental and utility assistance program that has been ongoing since last July. Also, with a combination of CARES Act money, Emergency Solution Grant, wanna make sure I'm saying this right, right? So, I mean, we, we, uh, we have the ability, and so does the county, has a six million dollar program for actual rental and utility assistance to help, you know, give people the resources they need to stay sheltered. What I'm more focused on is the long-term, uh, addressing the long-term shortage of housing for people to have access to. So, just making sure.
Let me kind of.
Councilwoman Torrell?
I, I like this idea where you're going, but I'm thinking, what if we take the PPP even further and look at at, at working with developers to build affordable housing that would fit this criteria?
Okay, when you say PPP, what are you talking about?
Private-public partnership.
Oh, okay. Because there's also the.
Well, what, yeah, so the private.
There's a meta-program. It's like, oh, I'm dying.
So, there, there are other avenues here.
It's an acronym.
Yeah, there's a lot of PPPs, so. So, so there, there's, there's different ways to tackle this program here.
Yeah.
And, and the idea is that we have, if we have more affordable housing, okay, we don't, we don't give them a handout every year, or however long it's, it's, it's gonna take, they can, they can buy their own homes, become taxpayers, and participate in American dream. So, I mean, that's just one way to look at it. I don't know if four point five will get anything going, but I'm pretty sure that if we, you know, down the road, that could be a project for the city to look at. I'm pretty sure there are a lot of avenues in the city that will participate, because I think everyone that I know right now, they want to solve the homelessness problem. They wanna solve the affordable housing issue. Okay, so, not everyone is sitting on the sidelines thinking that, you know, it's not my issue because I think as citizens of Norman, I can tell you right now, I got like twenty-two people that would say that we wanna solve this problem so we can get on to the next part of the phase of recovery. And recovery is economic renaissance. So, you know, so it, it's a, it's a complete package here. So, I hope that, you know, the next round of money we get, we sincerely look at this next route, because this, this will take care of a lot of issues, I think. And I just know a lot of people who want to solve this problem with you outside this room today, so.
Madam Mayor, just as, as, as an attempt to perhaps bring this conversation to an action item, um, processes to develop public-private partnerships related to affordable housing. Across the country, there are developers who live in this universe. This is what they do. They understand the tax credit availability to make things affordable. And a lot of times where a city would participate in partnership to make sure we're getting out of this affordable project, what we need is the ability to use city dollars to buy down the cost of the project. It could be the cost of sewer and water connections to a, a, a project site for a hundred units. It could be, you know, the, the, the cost of plan checking and permits and all of that type of thing. It could be the buy-down of rents in a one-time investment that, yes, now this project, the, the average rent for people who qualify is gonna be, well, it, it, it's, you subsidize it, but it's not a monthly check. You, you, you built that into the cost of the project. And you can approach developers who operate in that universe through a request for proposal to say, development community, if we had this much money available, bring us your proposals. How would you help us use this money to invest to provide as many affordable units as possible? To turn one-time money into long-term affordability. So, just thoughts on how you could approach an investment of one-time money to bring in private investment and private operators with expertise where you can verify how their, what their track record looks like. So, just thoughts.
Is that a follow-up?
I, I do have, which committee would this be most appropriately? We can put this to do, kind of develop this, this idea.
I think we're waiting on the studies to come back in before we, we can.
So, in October, we, oh, no, in the housing piece, we're gonna let that RFP out here shortly.
We're trying.
Yep. So, that'll be, it'll be a little slower going.
Thank you, sir.
Councilwoman Hallman?
Uh, just gonna say, it, I also envision it as mostly structurally. So, a mix of maybe, you know, buying and rehabbing the Emerald Greens apartment complex. It could be buying those houses on Reed, and maybe some of them can be rehabbed, maybe they get torn down, and we rebuild. I was thinking of the ones that we did, or broke ground on last year on Johnson. Couldn't recall how much those cost each.
Yeah, the, uh, the lot cost was about thirty thousand dollars a lot, the construction cost, or, or a hundred and sixty thousand. We're right at a hundred dollars a square foot outside of the lot cost.
So, two hundred thousand apiece, that's pretty high, I, sort of. Um, but that, it kind of a mixture of, uh, those houses, Emerald Greens apartments, but also potentially incentivizing, uh, developers, especially, we've talked a lot about affordable housing in the Center City Form Based Code area, uh, incentivizing developers to put in affordable housing in those units, uh, or partnering with any of our local development, you know, to build affordable housing. If that's, you know, what is the threshold that they need to make it work? Can we fill in that gap? So, I, I definitely envision it as a multifaceted kind of approach.
Councilwoman Hall?
Um, I think.
Oh, Councilwoman Pica.
I just, you know, support exactly what Councilmember Holman just said, but I will throw a little weight behind what Councilmember Torrell said. I think that if we were serious about trying to end some of these cycles of poverty and homelessness, we would look at avenues such as job training, skills training, and maybe siphoning off a portion of this money to start getting, getting people off their feet and, you know, equipped with some of the skills that will, you know, make them successful once we've gotten them on their.
I feel like we probably discussed maybe scholarships to, like, more Norman, because we, that would build up our skilled workforce, which is also sorely lacking. Any appetite to look into that? Maybe reach out and?
I would certainly.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Uh, City Manager, it sounds like a conversation with Mr. Rettman.
Transportation to MNTC is a thing, too.
Councilwoman Hall?
And the other thing I just wanted to throw out there in regards to the public-private partnership piece, and that, that private piece can also be the nonprofit community.
Yeah, of course.
Habitat for Humanity has got a, they are, have traditionally built single-family homes, but also quite a, quite a bit of conversation going on within our Habitat chapter here in Norman about other more creative ways to create, um, multi-housing type of units instead of always going with the single-family unit. So, I think they would fit into this conversation as well, just throwing it out there.
Councilwoman Foreman?
I'm just gonna say this. Uh, one of the last things that we talked about, um, with Ms. Craig, on some units, I think that we approved, I think, and I think Councilmember Holman would know this, because I think we talked about it. I think the rent for our most affordable housing was still like almost nine hundred dollars.
Seven something.
It was like eight something.
It was more than I considered affordable.
And that's still, yeah, exactly. That's still more than affordable for the people that we're talking about serving. So, if we're gonna go forward on this, we need to make it more affordable than what our status quo is at the moment, for what it's worth.
And perhaps advocate for a raise in minimum wage.
I was thinking the same thing.
Okay. One other thing I wanted to put on your radar, which I have zero information about, but I am hoping that Emmy may resume, uh, regular testing. I think Normanite's got a little spoiled, knowing that's where you went, and it was done quickly, very efficiently. And so, that may be something that, uh, comes our way. We never used, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Powell. I think that the state picked up all of the testing expenses, and we never had to fill the gap. Is that correct?
I think that is correct. Mr. Francisco, do you remember us, I mean.
I know we had talked about it in a moment of panic, but I don't think we had to.
I know we didn't spend all of the money. I know we spent some, but not all.
On, on supporting Emmy or?
On supporting testing.
The New Year, so we didn't, I don't think we had to pay at all.
So, there's just something, and I know a lot of us, we've, we've have an idea of how we wanna spend it, but we're, we can't spend it. But that needs to be on everyone's radar as well. I'm hoping the state will follow suit, though, and, and pay for it out of their ARPA money.
Yeah, I actually have a question about that, um, maybe from Mr. Francisco, because obviously I support access to testing, and I, I know it's a little challenging right now to be COVID-tested. The vaccine piece, I think we have a handle on, um, but to, with the increase in the Delta variant, I think people are really struggling to find a testing site. So, obviously, we wanna attend to that, but what, what is, I, I know it was funded by the state, but was that through the county health department? I mean, I'm trying to figure out who really bears the responsibility for addressing this need. Um, I mean, is it some?
Um, I mean, is it something that we need to take funds from other things to attend to that? Or is this something that really should be, um, wh- where does that function fit?
At least earlier this year, it was a state program administered by the county health departments.
Yeah.
Can't say that that's the case now, but it was then.
Okay, because that's a question I'd really like to pursue as we think about this, because it seems like the county health department, through state funding, or county funding, or whatever, that's where it should be, they should be picking up the slack right now.
Yeah.
So.
Unfortunately, I think we were all hoping that these conversations would be behind us.
Yep.
And unfortunately, they are not, and so I will take a moment and remind everyone that vaccination is the way out. If we don't, it's just gonna keep mutating, and this is gonna be round five, round six, round seven, so. Excited to see the vaccini- vaccination, uh, program launch. I would be interested to hear your, y'all's feedback on, in addition to considering that on 8/24, moving the $100,000 for the Norman Arts Council on 8/24.
I'm fine with that.
I'm okay with that.
Councilor Studley?
Personal opinion, when you were talking about the teen CEO program, I didn't know you were referring to taking it out of this, and I feel that that $100, instead of going to the teen CEO, should go towards the arts council stuff. I think that that could come out of some other funding, other than.
The reason why I had proposed ARPA was because it helps break the cycle of poverty for several families that are first generation and lower income. So, it's, I had envisioned, kind of what you're envisioning, is truly making a difference long-term in people's lives. So, hopefully, my, my, my true hope would be we find a way to do both of them, given it's the smallest amounts on there. Anything else about Norman Arts Council, though?
Fully support moving ahead with that.
All right.
So, I just have a question.
Councilor Schuler?
Question about, um, so we had talked about the nonprofit support at, so we were talking about the Virtue Center, and we're talking about Food and Shelter, and the Norman Arts Council. Um, and so, that million that's under nonprofit support is that the Virtue Center, and then Norman Arts Council, and then some other thing, and then we have the Food and Shelter lumped under Affordable Housing currently, or?
My, my understanding of what council's discussion was, was that was how you were allocating the nonprofit money.
Okay.
And tell me if I'm wrong.
And, and it literally just a number on paper?
Yeah.
And it, we can do it.
Yeah.
Any way you decide to slice it works. We, we can say, we want to look at the $500,000 out of the affordable housing component for the Food Shelter support, and $500,000 out of the nonprofit support for, um, the Virtue Center. And, you know, if you had $100,000 for the Arts Council, you'd still have $400,000 in the nonprofit support bucket, if that's the way you decided to.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to understand, is like where the buckets of money are coming from. Um, and then there was still that conversation about having other nonprofits? So, like, where does that also fit in the conversation before we, I mean, I'm fine with moving the Norman Arts Council stuff forward, um, but just want to make sure that we're adjusting our numbers as we do that.
Correct, and we're happy to change these right here on the fly, so you can kind of see that running total. And, you know, maybe one of those control points, um, you know, we had conversation about stormwater projects that do qualify, and Mr. O'Leary has a shovel-ready list of stormwater projects, and I think Project Two and Project Three on the list. Mr. O'Leary, if I'm not mistaken, Ballpark, are about $3 million. If you wanted to take the Number Two and Number Three project off of that stormwater list, and those were projects that we put together, uh, before our last request for the voters to support a stormwater enterprise, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, it's part of your Stormwater Master Plan. Um, there were, we had 33 projects ranked that we took to the voters in 2019 for about 60 million. So, we would just, with your direction, we would just go back to that ranking list and, and start knocking off the top-ranked projects.
So, you could spend a little less in the stormwater arena and spend a little more on your nonprofits. They're, I mean, they're, all the flexibility is yours.
Is, is it possible for our next community planning and transportation meeting to take some eyes on that $300,000, or $3 million for stormwater?
It's actually 4 million.
Yeah, because the, yeah, the stormwater park at Carter and Alameda was a, you know, separate conversation about an opportunity to make the improvements that Dr. Iverson had identified as a possibility.
Are you guys ready to, I mean, we need to start looking at these things, so are you ready to move it to committee?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
To move it, okay, thank you. All right, Councilor Peacock?
The only thing that I really don't see on here that I would like to see some money put towards would be, uh, small business recovery grants. I don't see a whole lot.
I think it could be both. I think we talked about both, but are you, yeah, continue.
Uh, I mean, I think, you know, you have the entrepreneur grants, it's great for startups, but I'm, I'm, I'm more referring to our existing businesses. Some, similar to what we did with the last round of CARES funding, um, went through, went EDAB. Um, I think we spent, was it 4 million last time?
Um, what?
It was 3.8, I believe.
Yeah.
But again, we didn't use all of that money either.
Okay.
And, and a lot of that money were businesses that didn't actually qualify, so.
Okay. Do we have any idea what that amount left is?
I'm gonna guess it's 400,000 is probably left.
That's a start.
You can do 40 more at 10,000 a pop, and so.
Okay.
I guess it would be nice to see, I keep hearing, well, we didn't spend all of it, we didn't spend all of it, well, what, what do we have left?
Right.
Of things that we allocated.
And how long do we have to spend it?
For the CARES?
It was reimbursed, huh?
Yeah, so.
Oh, so that one's ours in the bank. Yeah, if there wasn't money spent on the small business, I'd like to turn around and.
Yeah.
Put that right back into it as soon as possible.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll, we'll, uh, do that homework, uh, with books closed June 30, 2021, and bring you that unspent balance for the programs that we'd allocated, and there may be 400, 500,000 left available, and you could, you know, bring in appropriation, and we can move immediately.
Okay, that'd be great.
So, I guess I thought the, that 1 million for the entrepreneur grants was not just included the small business stuff.
The way I envisioned it, uh, those were strategically geared towards startups. Basically, instead of the traditional economic development path, where you go out and try to incentivize businesses to relocate here, we use this mechanism to cultivate some businesses, local businesses.
Right, okay.
Um, but what I'm referring to just now on the small business recovery, that would be existing businesses that are struggling, uh, as a result of the pandemic.
So, similar to the program we already have in place?
Exactly, exactly the program.
Okay, well, yeah, let's, yeah, let's chip that out.
We'll bring you back the remaining balance in the bucket.
Yeah.
I don't think we appropriated anything of that bucket for the current.
Been appropriated.
Also, we're good. We, we could spend it. So, yeah, we'll bring you an update on that.
Got a system in place.
Application process already in place.
It would be nice to review the application process, though, and with feedback of how it went.
Absolutely.
And things we need to change if we're gonna do it again.
Study session agenda, potentially?
In EDAB's next meeting is September 2nd, so that might.
Oh, perfect. Well, yeah, we'll, we'll take it through EDAB and bring it to council for your final review before we pull the trigger.
Thank you. Councilor Holman?
Yeah, so, something along those same lines. I'd like to see maybe something that, like, uh, I've noticed several businesses around town, a few on Main Street have had their, like, neon lights have been busted out, like the, uh, the Brew House, and the Red Brick Bar, and things like that. If there was things that, uh, a way they could apply for some funding to, you know, basically just their business improvement, or help them get themselves back, back to the way they were before, or something like that type of, a pick-me-up, you know?
I think it's exactly what this is.
And like, I just walking down Main Street, thinking of like, you know, historic Main Street, the neon lights, and some of them are busted out, and they, I don't know if they haven't been able to get them fixed, there's just a backlog, but just little stuff like that that could help a small business, uh, you know, pretty significantly, just having their, their lights working right, and things like that.
Councilor Lynn?
Uh, just on the nonprofit stuff, just for transparency's sake, I, I think that that should be an application process for anybody that fits within that criteria. I don't think that it should just be 500,000 to you, 500,000 to you, here's 100,000. I mean.
Councilor Lynn, I go back and forth on that, too. I, I think what the thought, at least in my head, how I'm able to lean towards these two, is it's one-time infrastructure, because they're building new facilities. It's not an ongoing, you know, so that's kind of where I'm at, but I completely see what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, it just, just for fairness in the process, I mean, that's a chunk of change for any nonprofit, and I, I know that they need it. There's other nonprofits that probably need it as well. Uh, I think that we should, at least everybody get, at least try to get a bite at the apple.
Councilor Hall?
Yeah, we, we did discuss that at the retreat, and I, I understand what you're saying, I really do. Um, and, and for me personally, you know, thinking about this since then, is each one of these things literally ticks off, it's not just supporting a nonprofit, we are investing in a nonprofit to tick off what ARPA money is intended to address. So, the Arts Council, as we talked about, is, um, recovery for tourism, hospitality, economic development. Um, the Virtue Center is literally investing in increased behavioral health and mental health services for all kinds of people.
Yeah.
So, that is, um, increasing accessibility to a demonstrated need that is specifically spelled out in ARPA, and Food and Shelter is the same thing. Um, they're addressing what they have discovered as that was not the original direction they were gonna go, uh, to build a food pantry, but because of the pandemic, and because of the population that they're serving, which is not just the homeless population, they have identified the need for a central food pantry that anybody, um, that meets the criteria can go and get fresh food and address the food desert piece. So, these are all things that, um, are identified as part of the COVID recovery. So, that's what makes me comfortable with this, and if we had more, I would be really interested in, you know, having a, opening it up to other people. But these specifically meet needs that are outlined, that we know, um, is something that we need to increase in our community.
Councilor Torrell?
Just for clarification here, I agree with the food pantry and the, uh, the Virtue Center. What are the arts, what's the requirement for $100,000 again, just, I've, I've been forgotten.
Yeah.
Go on.
Yeah, again, can address that.
So, yeah, just to kind of fill in on that a little bit, um, we have a 40-year history of a granting program that's already in place. Um, we're $100,000 short on what we were supposed to be able to grant out to the arts organizations this year. They've already been through the process. They've already been through the VADA grant process that the city's approved of, that we've had in place for decades, and so, we've actually already taken them through that process. So, that money would come into the Arts Council, but it would immediately be dispersed to the 25 organizations that are just waiting to know if they're gonna get their full grant amount this year or not.
And it's directly related to the pandemic?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, these are hotel funds. We're short because people aren't staying in hotels because of the pandemic.
Which I think was an issue we never thought we'd have.
It wasn't. I mean, we, we, you know, having hotel funds come into the arts, we're the only community in the state that does that, and we are envied by Oklahoma City and Tulsa for that system, because it has always been a self-perpetuating system, and never in our minds did we think that there could be something that could change that.
Right. Just to follow up here, so, um, if these funds are for infrastructure, for example, you know, doing, for COVID-related issues here, so, when you get this $100,000, it'll be dispersed to 25 different agencies for what? Like, tell us, tell us a project.
For arts programming, so Norman Music Festival, the Sooner Theater, uh, Jazz in June, the Medieval Fair. So, the, the, the events that make us a city of festivals, the events that make people come here.
Got it, all right.
And spend money.
All right, thanks.
The economic impact is?
Um, when we did our economic impact study, the arts generated over $4 million in tax funds for the city of Norman and the county.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Foreman?
I was just gonna ask Ms. Craig, so we're considering 500,000 to Food and Shelter, correct? Do you think that's a sufficient amount of fund? Do they need more? Is there anything else? Because you, you know, you deal with this kind of thing. What would your opinion be if you had Dream ARP money?
Well, you know, I also staffed Social Volunteer Services Commission, and we just went through our grant process that the council appropriated 225,000 dollars. And we awarded the full 225,000 dollars. We had about $250,000 worth of applications. We capped it at 10,000. And so, the actual programming for nonprofits is really different than the capital concerns. You know, there is a little capital in that for buying equipment, things like that, but there are multiple nonprofits in town that are, have active capital campaigns. Uh, through CBG, we just did a RFP for acquisition of property, or nonprofit rehab, and had six applications for 25,000 dollars a piece. Um, and so, I just, you know, my concern is, is there's a lot going on in this town. These are two worthy organizations that, that have capital campaigns going on for these needs, but there's, there's a lot more going on in the community besides these two.
Councilmember Foreman, just in terms of that dollar request, that was actually a request made by, uh, Food and Shelter in conjunction with private donors who are, you know, they're gonna be putting up a million dollars in private capital for that particular campaign as well. So, it, it is, it, it's a rarity when, um, uh, an agency like this is able to generate that much private sector support and needs more to close the gap, but that request was for 500,000 specifically. So, um, yeah, that, that wasn't a staff allocation or anything. That was a request made by the entity.
And I think that's the same.
Do you think that would have a positive impact on our city's situation? Is this a good use of our money, in your professional opinion?
Um, well, in pertaining to the Food and Shelter proposal, there, I mean, a food resource center by the food pantry, I mean, not the food pantry, the regional food bank is something this community could certainly use. It would help address the, uh, the need for those that are nutritionally, uh, just marginally, um, access to that. You know, there are multiple food pantries in town, um, and I know that it's, it's very difficult for the clientele to access those, to, to piece it together, from what's available from one and what's available from, from another one, and having a food resource center, um, that the, the community could access would be a positive thing, so.
Thank you.
We have a tour of the Moore Food and Resource Center scheduled for those that are interested on Saturday. I've actually served on their board, and it's a phenomenal resource, again, not just for those that aren't housed, but for residents that just need help. And they also have, I don't know what this one will look like, but a demo kitchen. You can apply for benefits right there. There's office space, so. It's a good resource. The, Councilor Studley?
I can elaborate on that, and I can tell you what this one's going to look like, because I have talked to April. And she, the idea is, in Norman, where our biggest struggle is, is we don't have one location to meet all the needs. So, if I'm a homeless person, I can't come to one place and get my social security card, my birth certificate, DHS benefits through food stamps, Section 8, all of that. So, the idea is to have that all housed under one facility, um, and that way, things don't get lost in the, in the process. And so, it just helps, I think, case management all the way around. Um, but I did want to say, I agree with Kelly on, um, we need to have an avenue for other nonprofits to ask for some of this money, and I, my opinion, as much as I love stormwater projects, we have a lot of money that we give to stormwater that we allocate, and I think that this money right now for ARPA, 3 million, i- in my opinion, is great for stormwater projects, um, if that's what we're wanting to focus on. We don't need to have two separate lines for stormwater projects, and we can take that other 900,000, put it towards the nonprofit, and allow, like, like, uh, Ms. Craig was saying, we've got a lot of other nonprofits here that this would benefit, and I think that we need to really look at that and consider that, because they help all sorts of people across our community.
Do we know if, uh, the infrastructure is gonna include stormwater?
Mr. Francisco?
Yes, it definitely will.
Got it, yeah, because there's information flying, and it's a lot of proposals, but not a lot of solid direction as of yet. But if that's a reoccurring theme that you hear, odds are it's the type of thing that does wind up on the final list of approved uses.
What we do know, what will be included, are the things that are in the Federal Highway Administration programs currently, the water and drinking water and clean water, um, state revolving fund programs, which include stormwater, and something related to broadband. We know will be included in the infrastructure program.
I'd also be curious to see, I know that there's, they're still working out how we apply for state ARPA money. If that 900,000 could come out of the state ARPA money, uh, that, I'd like us to explore that, and, but again, there's, I'd say 60 days, maybe, before we even get guidelines on how to apply for it, unfortunately. But I'd still like to see the projects and see what we're working with, so we fully understand all the options. Councilor Hall?
So, just to touch on the stormwater projects, um, again, when you go back and look at what the guidelines are and the four broad categories, I think we have done a pretty decent job of balancing, um, where we're going and how we're investing with ARPA funding, and to me, stormwater, uh, we are not adequately funding. And to me, stormwater, we are not adequately funding. And that's, you know, something that we're gonna continue to address. And I think that probably most everybody in the room would agree that, you know, not being successful in establishing a stormwater utility is still putting a lot of pressure on our general fund to do the things that we absolutely have to do, which has nothing to do with all of the needs that we have with stormwater projects, capital projects, that I think the bond proposal was what, like 64 million or something like that?
69.
60 million? And so we're talking about three. And again, I really want to make sure that that is also a priority, because we know it's something we're gonna have to contend with one way or the other. And it's absolutely spelled out for this particular tranche of money for, to address stormwater and other clean water. But to your point, the beauty of this is, you know, I really appreciate moving forward on the things that we can do, but this is just almost like a statement of intention of where we want to go and where we want to find that balance in all of these things. Because once we get more information on the infrastructure package, we may be able to come back and move some of this around to address other things. So I agree, if we can, you know, find other places to consider, you know, a nonprofit granting option, because we free up other money, then I'm happy to consider that, too, because that's something that, you know, I did speak out about at the retreat, so.
Madam Mayor, just a quick question to put a bow on the Carter property piece. Mr. O'Leary, in our master plan, and, you know, looking at the top of the list, how shovel-ready do we feel those projects are?
Not very.
Okay. So what I was thinking is the ability to say, and I think out of the last bunch of CARES Act, I think we allocated 300,000, Dr. Evansen, and we thought about, you know, doing cleanup and making sure the Bishop watershed was protected while we work on the architectural plan and landscape architecture for the stormwater park. And I think that it was 300,000 we stuck in that capital project account?
That's correct. That was 300,000 that came from Greenbelt funding that hadn't been used yet. So we have proceeded with a conceptual plan for a, what we're tentatively calling Norman Nature Park, but which can be named through Parks Board naming conventions for the property at Carter and Alameda. And what it would be is a project that would improve the storage, floodplain storage capacity within that property, because it's a unique property that Bishop Creek runs through the middle of. It's hard to develop because there is so much floodplain on it. So taking advantage of it to store more water during those high flood events, so that it goes downstream much slower, that helps the people downstream. And then using it as a park, using it as an amenity for that neighborhood, and respecting the natural elements, and the really interesting topography that's already with that site, that's kind of what that, what our goal with that final master conceptual design has been. That's been completed now by CEBG. And the next step would be to take it to an RFP, to do the actual design work, the environmental permitting work, to do the, to have an idea of what it would take to build the additional floodplain storage capacity, and then develop that park with green infrastructure practices as basically models for people to see how they work over time.
Excellent. We'll bring that package with the master plan documents to committee. So, thank you, Dr. Evans. Appreciate it.
Do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I misspoke when I'm saying it's well-funded. I know it's not well-funded, and I completely know that we have stormwater issues. I get that. So if I said it's well-funded, I apologize. I completely misspoke on that. But what I meant is that we already have money allocated, but if we have infrastructure money also coming, do we know how much Norman is getting? Any ballpark idea at all?
The only idea, again, I've spent so much of my life on CARES, ARPA, and infrastructure calls. It will not be this nice. It won't be like, here's your chunk of money, spend it in this way.
Okay.
It will be, here's some money, but here's competitive grants.
It's gonna be more about the competitive grants.
But we know specifically, stormwater is one of those things that that money can be used on.
Well, addressing climate change is one of them as well, looking for green-type projects.
And transit is something else that I didn't mention. But we know that what they are trying to do is use existing regulations. So it'll be something similar to the ACOG granting process that we go through for street and bridge projects and traffic signal projects. It'll be something similar to the statewide revolving fund process that we already have in place and have used. So it'll be something like that. It'll be a chunk of money that is out there for cities to compete for.
Okay, okay.
It won't be as nice, but we'll, we've got a great staff that's real good at writing grants, so I'm excited for that.
So, no dispoint, clarification, yeah. Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm understanding, you know, the difference between ARPA and the infrastructure, specifically when it comes to stormwater projects, everything in that, in those buckets. There is a potential to get some state funding to support these two. We just don't know that yet.
Correct.
So I guess, just like the EOC, I'm comfortable with keeping those numbers in place, because the possibility is, the possibility is that we may be able to come back and amend some of these numbers, because we're gonna be able to play in a different bucket. Do I have that?
That's our goal, absolutely.
Okay.
Councilor Holman?
Yeah, I do agree with, I want to find a way to get more nonprofits involved, more funding for nonprofits. And I would, I do want to see the Carter, that part, that project get done.
Me, too.
And if we can find other funding to get it done, I definitely support getting that done, especially, I think, on Bishop Creek right there. I think that is a perfect place to have an educational piece, to show people. And, you know, Bishop Creek has been a big part of our discussion recently in regard to development, and, you know, fixing up the duck pond, even though it's OU property, but maybe we can offer some funding to look at that, that type of stormwater stuff. But I do want to, I do want to find a way to get some more money for the nonprofits, and then hopefully, we, because I do think the stormwater stuff, in my opinion, is the, to me, is the number-one structural problem in the whole city that we've got to deal with.
So, Madam Mayor, hearing from several council members, our ability to take the 900,000 and increase the nonprofit support, leave 3 million in there for stormwater, which could be a variety of projects that we will bring to committee off the master plan, including the Carter and Alameda property. While we, if that works, if there are nods to say, let's increase the availability of funds to our nonprofit community, we will prepare a notice of funding availability, add the 900,000, and let those nonprofits bring to us their needs. We can use EDAB potentially as the initial sounding board for criteria for nonprofit support. If council's more interested in things like hard dollar, you know, whether it's an infrastructure purchase or an equipment purchase, as opposed to operating expenses for our nonprofits, council will be able to put your fingerprint specifically on how those eligible uses are ranked when they apply.
I like that.
Yeah, and the one thing I guess I'd like to add to that with our criteria is that it does meet the requirements that are in the ARPA, how that's defined.
Excellent.
And there's lots of different categories for that, but I think we need to limit the awards to demonstrating how it fits into what is defined in the interim final report.
That will help us on the backend tremendously.
What?
That will help us on the backend tremendously, too, because although all the categories are so broad, it's all going to come down to documentation.
Yeah.
Councilor Tornarell, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I think these are all great ideas on the nonprofit side here. I'd like to go ahead and add that we should have an application process going forward, and maybe do it like we did with the small business loans, limit it to 10,000 or 15,000 dollars.
Well, it'd have to fall into these categories, too.
If it falls under the categories, once we develop the categories and get the criteria set, I think to make it fair for everyone, there should be an application process. They should know what the criteria process is, so they know what they're applying for, so they don't waste their times and our time, and make it available to as many nonprofits as we can, to make it fair for everyone, too, to participate in this as well here, so.
The thought that just occurred to me, because at council's approval, I have the privilege of being a board member with the United Way. And they have a very robust process by which they evaluate applications. And what council could do potentially, and I'm thinking out loud, and Darren Wilson may yell at me, but the thought that you could take advantage of the United Way's machine and say, Mr. Wilson, will you and the United Way help us move this additional support through our nonprofit community, following the priorities that council has established? ARPA wants the money used for these things. And you could, you would have the eyes and effort of support of 60 volunteers who do this annually for 28 nonprofits currently, and they could expand that and open it up to every nonprofit that operates in Norman, and really take a burden off of your staff and provide you with this level of third-party assurance that the dollars are gonna go exactly where you want them to go.
Okay. Councilor Studley?
Can we at least agree that these three ones up here will be assigned to those, and that the extra 900,000 is what's going to be used for the application process for the remaining?
That's my understanding. Does anyone else understand otherwise?
That's what I understand, too, too.
We will make that so. We'll bring you that appropriation for those three: Virtue Center, Food Shelter, Arts Council, 900,000. I'll have that conversation with Mr. Wilson in the morning to see how we can take full advantage of their skill set.
Excellent.
And who, I've got a question, can I follow up on that?
Who will look at the criteria to make sure that these grants meet the criteria?
Is that something that United Way will look at, too?
Oh, yeah. We'll give them the ARP criteria, that these are the people that need to be supported through the nonprofits. Yeah, we can put that together. And we'll CC council. You'll see everything we're gonna send to the United Way, along with the ability to have them move forward and help us distribute.
That is awesome. That is awesome. Thank you.
Would it be open to religious nonprofits?
You know what? I think so, because I believe Catholic charities is a recipient through United Way.
Yeah, I think it would just make sure we're following federal rules on that.
Yeah, they just have to be a final one, see, really.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Good progress, evolution of this conversation. Obviously, things are fluid. As Councilor Hall touched on earlier, there's still not final. They're like, we're pretty sure, this is it. So we're definitely staying in those guidelines. I think we're addressing a lot of community needs here. And I know there was concerns about only spending half now and half later, but time's flying by, and I think we're gonna blink our eyes, and then we'll have the second one in the bank, and may not even be ready to move forward on the other ones. But I like how we moved a lot of things forward, at least with research and background and getting it going. And we're continuing to move things that we're sure of forward now. So, well done, everyone. Any other questions?
I would just add, and just let council know, as you know, we have a pending deadline. We staff have a pending deadline to make our first interim report on how the ARPA funds are being used, and we have to report to the Department of Treasury. So this discussion will be very informative in what we, in what we report to them. And I think, nationally speaking, we're way ahead of the game, you know.
So you have everything you need?
Yes.
Oh, and one last thing about the socializing that I forgot, that I think plays into the affordable housing and stimulating the economy. They pay, they based off the hourly rate on the MIT standard of living calculation, which is $14 an hour. So it's not minimum wage when they're out doing this work.
Interesting.
All right, thank you, everyone. See you next Tuesday.